My name is Lorraine Stacker and I am retired now, but I was formerly Penrith City Council's historian and research librarian. And we are sitting in the library's research room and I'm having a conversation with Jim Mason, who had worked for Penrith Council for forty-five and a half years, which I think is absolutely amazing. And so, I know Jim, you had a lot of different careers in that time you were at council. So, but I think it would be really nice for you to just say something about yourself, your family and your background and how you ended up working for Penrith Council.
Yeah, right. Yes, my, like Lorraine said, my name is Jim Mason. I was born in High Street, Penrith on the 27th of August, 1942, in a private hospital opposite the fire station. It's not there now, of course. And I was raised in a family of seven. I was the middle child of seven. And we lived in Frogmore Road, Orchard Hills on a ten-acre property, which was given to my father by his father, where he built a house in 1936. I attended Orchard Hills Public School and then Penrith High School, where I completed my leaving certificate in 1959. I applied for a position at Penrith City Council that came up at the end of 1959. At the same time, I had applied for a Teachers' College Scholarship and I'd also applied for a job at the Commonwealth Bank.
Oh, okay.
Right. I did receive the Teachers' College Scholarship to Armidale and I was offered a position at the Commonwealth Bank. But after considering the options, I decided to accept the position at Penrith City Council as a junior clerk. And I commenced...
Were you interviewed?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I went through an interview. Went through an interview. Oh, I can't even... I think I was interviewed by the Zen Town Clerk Harold Corr.
Okay.
But I can't remember who else interviewed me.
Right, okay.
So, I started at the council on the 4th of January, 1960. Council at the time had gone through a... It was a very busy time for council. Council had only been proclaimed a city in the end of 1959. Evan Ross, who was the old town clerk, had retired due to ill health and Harold Corr had been appointed the new town clerk. At that stage, the offices of the council were the old, real old council chambers on the corner of Henry and Evan Street, opposite the little old primary school.
Yep, yep.
And that was the original council chambers that was opened in 18...
So, that's where you...
That's where we started.
Ah, okay.
We didn't actually work in the old council chambers or the back of it. There was buildings attached.
Right.
I think some of them are old army huts too.
Yes, yep.
And at that stage, the workshop for the council was still situated at the back of the council chambers. They hadn't moved at that stage.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. So, that's where we started and...
Was it computerised, do you think?
Oh, no computers or anything in those days.
Yeah.
It was all handwritten.
Oh, yeah.
And part of my job when I first started was working... Writing up the transfers. So, if anyone sold a block of land, we had to write them up in a big register.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, and we... The library still has all of those land transfers going back to the early 1900s. So, yeah, fantastic resource.
When I first started the council, part of my job was to take the money... Taking to the council to the bank each day, which was the Bank of New South Wales on the corner of High and Cassar Ray Street, Penrith.
So, was it a big bag of money?
Oh, whatever the takings were.
Right.
You just took them in...
So, you just walked down the street with a big bag of money?
And put them in and took them to the bank.
Oh, wow.
Right. As well as that, the council... When the rates were sent out, the council opened their office at St Mary's and I operated an old cash register.
Yes.
Which was a vintage one. And it was in the side of the building which was occupied as St Mary's Library.
Yes.
And on the other side of the library... Other side of the building was where the old St Mary's workforce for the outdoor staff...
So, is this the old council chambers?
The old council chambers.
The old St Mary's council chambers?
Council chambers, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it was then occupied by the library part where the library was.
Yes.
They had another room there where we collected the rates. And next door to that, they had like a workshop garage with the outdoor staff that were formerly worked at St Mary's Council, I suppose, when they amalgamated in 49.
Yep.
They still worked out of the St Mary's depot.
So, on that corner was the depot as well?
Yes.
At the back of the council chambers?
No, where the... They had a drive, a road up there toward at the back of the desk and that's where they worked out of there.
Okay, all right.
So, that was the early days of working at St Mary's office. Originally, I used to ride... After I used to catch the bus just to work, I then used to drive to... Get to work by riding my bicycle to work. I didn't have a brand-new bicycle, I had an old bike, which caused more troubles than enough. I didn't wear clips on my trousers like the modern young fellows did those days. I used to roll my trousers up and halfway into Penrith, my trousers would fall down and I'd get caught up in the chain. So, I was very pleased when I was able to get a licence in the latter part of 1960 and get a... My first vehicle was a 1952 Holden, a green one. A manual one, which I acquired off my eldest brother,
Yeah.
who had had it repaired after he rolled it over up at Stanthorpe in Queensland. So, I still had the fragments of glass in the car, I can tell you, when I acquired it. So, I found it a lot easier trying to get to work when I had a car then.
Yeah, yeah.
But that were the early days of trying to get to work. And I suppose the highlight of the year really in the first year I started was going to the Christmas party.
Right.
The council, they had a social club. They organised an annual Christmas party. In those days, it was held at the old School of Art... Not the School of Arts, the Railway Institute.
Oh, okay.
In where the Q... Yeah, in Belmore Street, which was later the Q Theatre.
Yeah.
They used to have the Christmas parties there. And it involved... It was one of the few organisations that included all staff.
Yes.
Whether you worked in the... On the roads or whether you worked in the office.
Yep.
If you were a member of the social club, you were invited to come along. After working in the rates department for a number of years and gaining experience there, I also... As part of the role in the rates department, I also attended... Used to go to the counter and answer any queries and questions that the rate payers had.
Yep.
And also helped with taking... Doing the duties of a cashier at that time as well, relieving and things like that. But you had contact with the public all the time because they were coming in querying their rates and so forth.
Yeah.
Yes. So, then later on, after a few years in the rates department, I was transferred into the finance section. Max Baker was my supervisor. He wasn't called at that stage the city treasurer, but later on he became the city treasurer. And I worked in that section and I was involved in the payroll.
Right.
I looked after the payroll. Just at that stage as a paymaster, but as a pay clerk and then I became the paymaster. Now, in the early days of starting on the council, when I first started, we were only paid every fortnight and we were paid in cash. Right? Someone would come around to your desk and give you a... Give you your pay docket, your pay and you checked your money and so forth. Right? So, that was the early days of the payroll. After a period of time, it became weekly pay.
Yeah.
Right? But we didn't go on to getting your money paid into the bank until many years later.
No, when I started in 86, I remember you coming around...
Paying in cash.
My little envelope with the cash in it. Yes. I've still got some of those little envelopes.
I have the money in them still.
No money, no. Well spent.
But I have to transgress and say, in the middle of... Later in 1960, we moved out of the old council chambers and went to the one on the corner of Henry and Station Streets.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Which was... The foundation stone was laid in 1959 and it was opened in 1960. Well, that was a real eye-opener, going into a brand-new building, which was certainly different, where the departments were split up differently.
Yes.
And it was a real eye-opener and...
Must feel very modern.
Yeah, brand-new desks and, you know, you were... I suppose we were spoiled because we're going from a... Like an old army hut into a brand-new building, which had a caretaker who lived on-site and his wife. And we had the privilege then of being served morning tea at our desk. So, they'd deliver the morning teas.
Yep.
And so, that was part of the new council chamber setup.
So... And the old council chambers was pulled down, wasn't it?
Yes, the old council chambers was pulled down and in 1964, that's where the new library was built. In 1964, yes. So, I progressed in working in the... From doing the payroll, progressed through the finance or in the finance section under Max Baker, over the years to become assistant accountant to Max Baker. And but we're still involved with the supervision of the payroll, et cetera. And as you said, in those days, we used to get... The mayor'd have to sign the payroll cheque. So, we'd have to go to the mayor's office in the morning on the day of payday, get the mayor to sign the cheque and then two of us would go down to the bank on the corner... The bank west back was then on the corner of High and Station Streets and get the cheque cashed and carry it back to the council chambers where we'd manually count it and put it in the envelopes.
Oh, my God.
There was no security or anything.
So, how much money was that?
Oh, it'd be thousands of dollars.
Oh, dear.
Because everyone... I think everyone but two or three people were paid by cash.
Yeah.
I think the town clerk and the engineer had their money paid directly into the bank.
Right.
And everyone else was paid by cash.
Yes.
And we had a couple of wooden boxes that we carried around. Someone would hand out the pay slip.
Yep.
You'd sign it and someone else would give you the pay, your pay.
Yes.
And then later in the afternoon, we'd then go out and pay the outdoor staff. We'd first of all, we'd go out and pay the outlying... Outdoor staff that couldn't get into the...
Yeah.
Couldn't get back to the depot to be paid. We'd go out and visit work sites and pay them on the site. And we'd go to St Mary's and pay the staff that worked out of St Mary's on the outdoor staff and go and pay St Mary's library as well.
Yep.
And then come back to the depot and pay the depot staff. And it was a case of paying them... We always had the balance at the end to see if we had no money left over. If you had money left over, you had to go back and check every envelope to see that you hadn't made a mistake. But we didn't have any trouble with security and...
No one tried to rob you from the bank?
No, no, none of that happened. But in later years, we had John Richardson go out with us and he was more or less a guard. He was a fire control officer, but his role was to assist us on payday and go out with us and like... And be as an extra supervisor, guard type of thing. But then in latter years, council negotiated through the union to have staff pay their wages directly into the bank.
Yeah.
And for that privilege or for that to happen, council gave away a few sacrifices to the staff.
Yeah.
They allowed them, the outdoor staff, an extra time off. They finished early so they could go and get the money out of the bank and things like that. So, there are some incentives to having money paid into the bank.
Yeah.
Right? But going back to my work history, I stayed in the finance with, under Max Baker's control for a while. And then management, in their wisdom, decided that they wanted someone qualified as Max Baker's outsider. Right? So, I was transferred to administration.
Yes.
Which was...
So, you didn't think about getting qualifications or...
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
I did study.
Yeah.
But I hated study. And I got halfway through my studies. I even went to tech in Sydney twice a week.
Yep.
I went to tech in Penrith.
Yes.
I hated studying. And I had more interest in being involved with organising football and cricket and playing those games and doing my studies, much to the disgust of my father. Yes. However, but they appointed someone else who was qualified to be Max Baker's assistant and I went and worked in administration for a number of years. I hated that. But then there was a bit of an upheaval in the pay office and they got me to come back and take over, back over the pay office. And I then looked after the pay office again and again took over the role as assistant accountant. In those days, you had a bookkeeping machine operator that did the ledgers and she produced the payroll slips on an accounting machine.
Yep.
Right? That was all done on a bookkeeping machine. And then, I'm not sure exactly of when the computer arrived, but I think it was in the 70s, we got the computer system into the council and then the payroll went onto a computer system. But in the meantime, I got more involved in the social side of things. Max Baker stood down as running the... Being involved with the social club and handed the reins to me and I became the secretary to the social club.
Yep.
Organising the Christmas party, which was mainly the only thing that the social club ran in those days. We used to have an odd cricket game and football game occasionally, but it was mainly the social... The annual Christmas party, which was then held at the Penrith Leagues Club. We were privileged, I suppose, to have as the president of the social club, a director of the leagues club, Murray Clark. And he was able to organise a bit of a discount that the leagues club gave us for having our function at the leagues club.
Yep.
And we used to have some great functions at the old leagues club, you know, on the corner of Station Street and Reserve Street there, before they moved to where they are today.
Yeah, yeah.
We had many Christmas parties down there that went off very well. And so, my role was as secretary treasurer. We just had to organise the Christmas party, that was all.
So, did you have anything to do with the credit union?
Yeah, the credit union didn't come in until later. The credit union, I think, finished in about 2000, something like that. And it went for 26 years. I was involved in the credit union...
So, was the state government involved in encouraging councils to close credit unions?
No, no.
How did that...
They got too much red tape.
Right.
You know, we had to... The rules and regulations of banking and so forth made it very difficult. Although we had a full-time bookkeeper and cashier and person looking after the credit union...
And it was here in the library?
We did have it in the library.
Yeah.
Originally, when we started, the credit union, it was all done voluntary.
Yep.
Bob Wilkinson was the first secretary of it. Don Hawkins was the president. And I was one of the original directors. When Don Hawkins retired, I took over as the president of the credit union. And I was still president of the credit union when we amalgamated with the police credit union.
And I've still got my account?
Yes, yes.
With the police bank now today?
Yes, the police bank now.
Yes, with still my original number that transferred across.
But the credit union served a very good and valuable support for council staff.
Yeah.
We assisted a lot of people in gaining small loans.
Yes, yeah.
I think the most we could loan without security in those days was $2,000. With security, you could more or less go up to $4,000. And we helped a lot of staff members. And they, you know, with savings and supporting them with their... And it helped a lot of people out of trouble.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
But after working in, under Max Baker in finance, I was appointed as the council's first personnel officer.
Yeah.
And as a personnel officer, I moved out of finance and I had a little office. By then, council had outgrown the council chambers and had moved their main lot of staff into the Cole Buckham store, which was opposite the Penrith Technical College in Henry Street.
Okay, yes.
We took over that whole building.
Yep.
It was two stories, two floors.
Yep.
And all the council staff, except once again, the finance section was working out of Boric House.
Yes.
I did work out of Boric House to start with.
Yes.
We occupied two different sections of Boric House on the same floor. And at one time, before we went to Cole Buckham, the Health and Building Department also worked out of Cole Buckham.
Yeah.
Yes. So, also worked out, worked out of Boric House, sorry.
Just shows you how scattered the council offices were.
Yeah, the council was scattered over two or three buildings at that stage.
Yeah.
And I suppose during my service with the council, I must have worked out of four or five different buildings. Yes. But in personnel... In my role of personnel officer, I was involved in interviewing all the council staff. Any new positions, I got involved in all interviews.
And you even interviewed me?
Yeah, interviewed you when you started. And also, in the early 70s, was a big move in council was the opening of the first childcare centre.
Yes, okay.
The first childcare centre was opened at... It was called Yaramy, it was opened at Warrington. And it was one of its... A unique one. It was a very large centre. It was built, I believe, it was built after Gough. Whitlam finished, I know, but it was built... They said it was built with Gough's money. I think it was grant money that was being allocated prior to...
Yep.
By the Whitlam government.
Okay.
And this building was, I think, was a 60-place childcare centre. And you don't, you never built any as large as that again. Council grew from that building to being the largest employer in construction of childcare centres in New South Wales. They had that many childcare centres and still do.
Yep.
Yes. So, they really set the pattern for childcare.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, on our laps, we have two interesting little documents. So, one is the centenary book that was put out in 1971 for the 100th anniversary of local government in Penrith. But this is the actual newspaper that came out at the time, the Penrith Press, and for the 5th of May, 1971. And it's all about the celebrations, the huge celebrations that Penrith Council put on. So, Jim, yeah, tell us about your experiences and your involvement in that.
Yes, certainly the celebration of the centenary was a very big... Very big part of the history of...
Event.
Event in the history of anyone that worked on the council.
Yep.
It was... They had a local committee that organised the events, but the staff were well and truly involved.
Yes.
The staff really got behind it.
Yep.
We... The council allowed us... We grew our hair, side leathers and beads, et cetera.
Oh, they were real, were they?
Yes, and the girls dressed up in colonial dresses, et cetera.
Yep.
And they had a parade through the street. And a lot of the staff, the girls, were on the float there that we have a photo of there. They took part in that. They did have a princess competition.
Yes, yes.
And many of the girls who worked on the council were involved in that and took part of that. And it was very big celebrations. It was spread over, I suppose, about a month. I was involved in looking after the function down on the river.
Yes.
The river fes function.
Yep.
Involved with making sure parking was... There was adequate parking and parking went... There was no havoc or any problems with the parking because it was held down at the river and it was a very congested area.
Yeah.
I didn't get involved in running any of the events, but just more or less overseeing it. Don Hawkins was in charge... The council officer was in charge of the celebrations. But they went for many, over a period of month. And the council staff were involved.
Yeah.
They had a pram pushing contest where all the council staff were in... A lot of the council staff were involved in this pram pushing contest. A contest with three other, two other teams, where they pushed this pram for 24 hours around the roads, the rural roads of Penrith.
Right.
And my role in that was, I was a support team. I was driving a support station wagon
Yeah.
where I'd pick up the newest people that were going to do the running and pick, meet the runners and relieve them. And the new runners had come in as part of the team and I'd take the old runners back to the council chambers where they could have a lie-down and a rest and something to eat. And that would be rotating all the time. So, it went on for 24 hours. So, it was two of us that did it.
Yeah.
And we've got some photos there of the support team and the team that ran, took place in the pram pushing contest.
Yep. It was... And so, did you attend the ball?
Yes, yes.
Got dressed up?
Yes, the centenary ball was a... Certainly an eye-opener. It involved... It was held at the leagues club.
Yes.
I've still got the original tickets. I, when I purchased my tickets, I've still got the tickets that I had.
Oh, you had to buy tickets then?
Oh, we had to buy the tickets. And but it was a very big, good night. And it was a very good function, put on at the leagues club.
Yep.
And the leagues club went to every possible way in making it a success.
Yes.
It was certainly a, I suppose, the prime... Part of the social side of it.
Yes.
The organisation of the actual ceremony of when the governors eroded and cut the law claim
Yes.
and the freedom of the city
Yes.
by the...
Granting to the...
Granting of the freedom of the city.
Yep.
That was... That's the photo of the dress-up at the ball of the...
Here's the staff.
Yes, that was after court and that was the staff also dressed up in their... That was the general manager and his staff with their vests on.
Yeah.
And some of them were dressed up in colonial uniforms, et cetera. But it was a great night, thoroughly enjoyed by everyone. And at that night, I took along that night a girl in the office who I later married.
Right, okay.
I took her to that ball.
Yes.
We weren't going out steadily at that stage, but later on, she worked in the office in the... but later on, uh, she worked in the office, in the, in the, in the account section as well, in the finance section. Uh, we may, we were able to do our courting without upsetting the office or anything like that. We became engaged in nineteen seventy-two.
Okay.
And married in nineteen seventy-three.
All right.
And she stayed working on the council until she left and had children.
Yeah.
After, that was in, after we'd been married for ten years.
Yeah.
I think we had our first son then.
Yeah.
Yes, so that was, that was, that was the start of my courtship. The council centenary ball.
Lovely.
Yes, it went off well.
Yeah.
But the, it was a lot smaller those days.
Yes.
And I got involved in looking and, and getting involved in the welfare and trying to look after the staff.
We would see you a lot, you would come around and, um, yeah, we sort of got to know you really well, much, much more than a lot of other staff, um, because you sort of kept in contact with us all.
Also, at that stage, council appointed new managers to the organisations in various departments and one of them was the human resources manager, which I applied for, but I didn't get.
Mm.
And so I became part of the human resources department.
Yep.
And I was still carrying out the personnel role.
Mm.
And at that stage, at one time there, the, we had an occupational health and safety officer.
Yep.
He resigned.
Mm.
They didn't appoint a new occupational health and safety officer. They asked me whether I'd take over the role.
Yep.
And I did that and I also looked after council's insurance at that stage.
Yeah.
And I wasn't doing as much personnel work, but I was looking after employee relations and occupational health and safety. I used to go to the depot every morning, the council depot, it's in Cox Avenue. I visited there every morning to talk to the outdoor staff, um, before they went out on the job. And then I'd go around to the various work sites at times and then I'd do the inspection of the childcare centres and the offices and. In nineteen ninety-four, the, uh, this building was opened and that's again was a big culture shock to the staff. We were, staff were spread over two or three different buildings and all of a sudden, we came into a new building, once again, new facilities and everything, but it was open plan office.
Yeah.
We didn't, in, in previous positions I had held in the other buildings, I had an office of my own and all of a sudden, you had an open plan office.
Yeah.
But it was a bit of a culture shock to come from a, a little office of your own or big office of your own.
Yeah.
Into an open plan office. So that's what happened in nineteen ninety-four. Before I finish, I'd just like to talk about a couple of my things going back that, that, that highlight my career, my life on the council. The first one was in nineteen sixty-one with the death of the mayor, Leo Spies. He died suddenly in Sydney, I think he was at a meeting or, you know, he was a businessman. He was the mayor at the time, he died suddenly. And I still remember, uh, his funeral was in Penrith at the Catholic Church and the, and the staff line both sides of the, of High Street in honour of him.
Yeah.
Um, so that was, that was a major thing that occurred then. And then in later years, when Harold Corr died suddenly. Harold Corr was the, he started on the council in the nineteen forties, uh, as a clerk, worked his way up after coming back from the Second World War and became, uh, town clerk in nineteen sixty-nine. And then he died suddenly, died suddenly and, uh, it was a, certainly a major shock to us all. I realised with the advent of the computer and the way things were changing, um, technology changing, uh, I felt that, uh, in two thousand and five, it was time for me to retire. Uh, I'd had a long career with the council, thoroughly enjoyed it. They looked after me tremendously.
Yeah.
I worked close to handy to home. At times I did enjoy the service of the council car. It was only through the council that I received the OAM in two thousand and two. I'm sure it was adding through the council.
Yeah.
Um, that I received that award. But I had great support from my wife and family in my career with the council. And the council, I'm indebted to the council. The mayor, Jackie Greeno, and the general manager, Alan Travis, who gave me a civic dinner when I retired, which I suppose not many, uh, people in my position were honoured with such a, such a dinner.
That's right.
Upstairs, uh, very few people were given that privilege. Uh, certainly senior officers, but not a, a bit of an also around like me who received that. But my, I suppose my biggest joy was trying to help people, uh, and, uh, help them in their, uh, not, you get, you got to know them personally.
Yeah.
You got to know their families, you got to know their lives and what they did and so forth because you got involved with them, trying to help them. And I hope, uh, by living in Penrith, uh, I can still get involved.
Yeah.
That's about it. Thank you.